Good evening. This special meeting of the Board of Trustees, Coraz D., is being held on September 5th, 2019. The time is 5:29. If you'll all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's behind the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, new business. Ms. Coraz, we're pulling this item, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Item number four, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion relating to entering into an interlocal agreement for the purpose of participation and intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas proceeding related to the sale, traffic, or merger of entities related to JP Morgan Infrastructure Investment Fund. PUC docket number 49849, joint report and application of El Paso Electric Company, Sun Jupiter Holdings LLC, and IIF US Holdings II LP for regulatory approvals under PURA 14.101, 39.262, and 39.915, and to consider administrative recommendations for employee health clinic physician, principal position at Robert R. Rojas Elementary School, assistant principal position at Pebble Hills High School, and licensed specialist in school psychology under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. We are adjourned at 5:31. We are back in session. The time is 6:21. We will continue with new business. A... Ms. Mata?
Yes.
Did I? I didn't think so. But she doesn't have a mic?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Me?
Yes.
No? Yes? Okay. Did the Board have a question for legal counsel on this item? Here, Board members, President Nahara and Dr. Espinoza, here what we'll need the Board to do is make a motion to authorize entering into an interlocal agreement for the purpose of intervening in the sale, transfer, or merger of El Paso Electric. This will basically help you move forward to maintain the status quo and the race that you currently enjoy as a government entity. So if we can get a motion...
Sir, focus!
Focus.
Paul, be quiet.
Motion. Okay. Come on, screw this up. I move that the Board approved and authorized the superintendent to enter into interlock agreement with El Paso County School District and like entities to participate and intervene in Public Utility Commission of Texas, PCU, proceeding related to the sale, transfer, or merger of the El Paso Electric Company to Sun Jupiter Holdings LLC and IIF USA Holdings II LP, entities related to JP Morgan Infrastructure Investments Funds, PCU docket numbered 49849, joint report and application of El Paso Electric Company. Jupiter Holdings LLC and IIF US Holdings II LP for regulatory approval under PURA 14.101, comma, 39 dot 262, comma, and 39915, and authorize the district to hire special counsel at the law firm of Herschel Blackwell to represent the district in the matter. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Minna and a second by Mr. Gata. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara, Mr. Minna, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries. Very well done, Mr. Minna.
Thank you.
We'll move on to consideration of approval of administrative recommendations. Number one, Dr. Espinoza, employee health clinic physician.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, administration recommends Ms. Alba Nevares to assume the roles and the responsibilities as a new employee health clinic physician.
Is that... I'm sorry, President Nahara, is that doctor?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Dr. Alba Nevares.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Ganda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Yay! We have a physician! And we have a pharmacist, right?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome! We're almost there.
Just moving along. Item B two, principal for Robert R. Rojas Elementary. It's my understanding we're going to pull this one?
Yes, administration's pulling this recommendation.
Okay. Item B three, assistant principal for Pebble Hills High School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, administration recommends Mr. Gerardo Talamantes to assume the roles and responsibilities as assistant principal of Pebble Hills High School.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gata and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And item B four, licensed specialist in school psychology.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, administration recommends Mr. Abraham Camario to assume all the roles and responsibilities as a new licensed specialist in school psychology.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Ganda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. At this time, we will move on to item number six, our Board Workshop, Student Activities Complex, the conceptual design options. Mr. Eington.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. Tonight, I've got in our audience the architects for our new SAC number two, and I'll introduce them in a minute. But we've been working, I think this is our fourth meeting that we've had since we... since the Board hired the firms to work on this project. We've had meetings today, all day, since nine o'clock up until the special board meeting, and reviewing it with various departments and stuff. And tonight, we felt like it was appropriate to bring it to the Board to show you conceptually what some of the possibilities could be by developing a second SAC. As I presented in the last month's... or this month, no, last month's board meeting, that we did finalize the purchase of the land, and we've acquired that property, the 60 acres, in order to do SAC two, which is next to the SAC one. Tonight, as I stated, we have HKS Architects and PSC Architects to... and representatives from those companies here tonight to walk you through these conceptual drawings and stuff, and to get any input y'all may have concerning the project. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mark Vanderroth, who is the principal in charge from HKS out of Dallas.
Thank you, Tom. President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and Board members, just wanted to relate that we're very honored to have this opportunity to work with you on the new SAC two. We met with some of you at the KD ISD Stadium over a year ago, and that's a high school stadium that HKS has designed. I just wanted to mention before I make introductions that our firm works at all scales, being K-12 high school collegiate and professional. You may have heard that, for example, our firm has worked in sports on the Cowboys Stadium, the Vikings Stadium, and the new LA Rams Stadium, just three NFL stadiums, and also the TCU Stadium, which is highly regarded in Fort Worth. We've had the chance to work on several high school stadiums as well. So we're just so thrilled to be here and be part of that. I wanted to first mention, PSC is our associate architect, and Hector de Santiago is here today. Also, our team, we have Fred Ortiz, who is our design principal. Dustin Harris is our project manager, and Phil "Julia" Montria, that's a mouthful, even for me with my name, is our senior designer. So, as Tom mentioned, we've had a chance to get together a few times, really understanding the site, really gathering information, understanding strategically how will we approach this opportunity. We had the chance to certainly visit the site, but also to visit and tour some other similar facilities, not only KD, but recently the Midlothian ISD Stadium, the Oak Point Amphitheater, which is in Plano, Texas, and the Toyota Stadium, which is a soccer complex in Frisco that we designed. So, we've been gathering information today. We met with several departments, drilling down into further and further detail. With that, I'm going to ask Fred Ortiz to come up here. Fred is a native El Pasoan, and he's going to walk you through several concepts, as Tom described.
I got the okay to step away from the lectern, because I'd rather be able to engage you. And actually, I'm a pretty passionate guy. I love talking about architecture, and of course, trying to create it is even more exciting. And as Mark said, I am a native El Pasoan. I was born and raised here, went to Urban High School. Yeah, no. I met him about a year ago, and he gave me, you know, he gave me heck for that. But I can't tell you how thankful and grateful I am to be here before you today, because there's nothing like coming back and doing something in your hometown. And I guarantee you, we're going to give it all we got. And as Mark mentioned to you, we do work on all scales, but it's one thing to do NFL stuff and Major League Baseball. Like, I'm working on the Rangers ballpark as well, but there's nothing, again, like doing something here at home. So we're going to bring it the same level of passion. So, as Tom mentioned, we've been going at this for quite some time now, and so what we thought would be good is to go back in time a bit and just kind of rehash. So we pulled slides from various presentations to try to give you a good feel for where we started and where we've been, and also where we are today. So, a lot of it is maybe two-dimensional planning, some three-dimensional perspective views, but then we're going to get into some visualization, so flying around in a model. So we really want to make you a part of this process. We're very transparent about it, and it's very exciting. So with that, I'd like to start off with the agenda. So what we did at first is we had a really great visioning session with the core group involved with the project, and so we're going to outline some high aspirational goals, which led to some preliminary planning, and we'll give you or inform you as to how we're starting to shape a very simple seating bowl that we then begin to drop on the site and articulate how that series of options essentially leads us to a place where we think that we're really getting excited about something that can work on so many levels. And then we'll open it up for discussion, okay? Although, if you feel compelled to ask and interrupt me, please feel free to do so, okay? So, I asked the group one question. I said, "If you could tell me one thing that would lead or define success," you know, "what would that be?" And, you know, every time I ask that question, it always kind of... there's always a pause, because, you know, someone's maybe wanting to think about what it is. And it's always interesting, because like, the CFO is going to say, "It's going to be on budget," right? The maintenance guy is going to say, "It's got to be low maintenance. It's got to work properly." And then there's maybe a person who maybe is more focused on exactly what they do on a day-to-day basis, but these aren't in any particular order, but accessibility. So it's one thing that you can create something, but if one can't get to it, if one can't move freely within it, and even down to handicap accessibility, okay, that's another level of accessibility, but it's got to work there, too. Creating an ambiance that is like no other, all right? So I can tie that one to like wow factor and originality, but the idea of this having a sense of being completed all at once, like, the group didn't want it to be like piecemeal, like, "Okay, do this little bit, and then do another thing." So we've been pushing on trying to do something that fully integrates with SAC one. So it's got to feel like you're developing a destination for El Paso representative of the district. It's got to have personality, wow factor. I mean, wow factor can be... can mean so many different things. It could be the first step one had, or the first impression one has upon driving onto the property, or it could be when they first step into a hospitality suite, and the impression they get and the views they have from there. Innovative. One of the things that we're really pushing on, and a lot of it, I think in many ways, is driven by the fact that we have $40 million to work with, no more, no less. And so the more that we can take the program and fully assess it and understand it to be able to find synergies between one and another, so that some of these spaces have dual use. So it's one thing to create an assembly space, right, that might be a large space like this one, that can be divided in thirds, and you can have small group meetings, or you can have the full room, full access, or maybe the police can take it over, and it could be a command center. But likewise, how the field can be used, or how a potential amphitheater space can be used and open itself to the community. Now you're talking about something that's fully accessible. It's somehow achieving and hitting the checkbox for all stakeholders that are involved. Big game atmosphere. I mean, obviously, now you're going to be working with two stadiums. Inviting people from outside of El Paso to come in and compete or perform in your venues is very important. Tournament friendly, so providing the spaces that will allow people to stage, to be able to prep, and then compete. And then, in the end, it's a learning environment. So how can we pull in that educational side of things? So, preliminary planning. One of the first things that we love to do is actually, it's almost like ignoring everything and thinking big, but trying to get an understanding of the site. So knowing that Joe Battle and Bob Hope are significant avenues, this intersection is really important. Understanding SAC one, topography, this sits high and it drops low, there's an arroyo that actually like becomes a Y up in here somewhere, and, you know, you got to be able to, you know, understand that, because it is a floodplain. And we're going to do our best to stay off of that and actually begin to identify where the best location for a stadium will be. With that, we started thinking about how we could begin to incorporate other things that were noted in our visioning session. So someone mentioned, "Hey, well, what if we could have an amphitheater that maybe resembles what UTEP has, something of that scale that is very welcoming?" And it works really, really well for UTEP, but there are really nice things that happen in and around that space, where these components of defining edges, allowing you to sit, there's water, there's shade, there's gravel paths, and how is it that we can create a front door that takes SAC one and SAC two to give it a front door impression off of that intersection? One of the things that we thought about, too, is like, how can we take advantage of the image and impression along Joe Battle? So this is representative of something of more iconic, that's a blade of sorts, that is very similar to what UTEP is doing with the act, the pickaxe, right? And maybe there's enough of those to represent each school that's a part of the district. More importantly, I think if we look at the one that actually defines the intersection, that one, you know, if we couldn't do all of those, at a minimum, we need to somehow emphasize that is the threshold and gateway into this new destination. So, as I mentioned, UTEP and the acts, and how this thing can change throughout the day, and actually, you know, introduce light, but defining an edge, and maybe there are certain sponsors that might be able to fund those and be able to sponsor and also identify with each school. And then taking just street photography and understanding these street edges and the scale, and how a building like this new football stadium, it's not something that's going to be so tall and vertical and be able to be perceived from the highway. So be able to understand that and also define these arrival boulevards that ultimately will then turn onto the site. And that front door impression that I'm talking about is, it could be that this amphitheater doubles as that, in that not only is it your curbside impression, but it also is something that the community can use, something that the district can actually begin to lease, and allow events to come and perform there. So, having, you know, gone macro scale, now we get into one of the more important components, is the seating bowl. So when we get into a seating bowl, and please keep in mind, this is a very simple model diagram, there's so much that your eye and imagination has to fill in, like these ends, but what we were trying to do is starting from the midfield and work out. So if we know that we've got a football field, and then we've got line work that implies soccer, and have the clearances, much like what we did at KD High School, where this is appropriately designed to where you have enough depth where the band can actually queue up while the team is on the sideline prior to halftime starting, and all the while, the sidelines from each of these are all focused on the activity there. It also is representative of a elevated press box, okay? I will say that this is only indicating a single story, but I think we're talking about potentially making that two-story, and actually understanding all the program that needs to go in there, as well as hospitality suites, and maybe the potential of something that might be revenue generating as well. So we took that component, and we began to drop it on different parts of the site. So there were three different locations. So the first one, we tagged it as Rattlesnake Hill, because we thought, "Wow, wouldn't it be interesting if this stadium can actually be like right next to that SAC one, and actually begin to introduce a lot of interesting things that could happen in that zone right there?" The immediate idea is that, "Well, I could be watching a game in SAC one, and then turn around, and I could see another in SAC two." There's a lot of really nice things about that, but likewise, one thing I want you to be aware of is that this is the current property that we're currently working with. So as you can see, this is already impeding and encroaching on, we're outside of our property. So in essence, it's plat one and plat two, and that's another discussion that others might want to speak to, but it is an aggressive move, and if we are trying to consider an amphitheater, and again, that's a diagram footprint, it is the scale of UTEP's Centennial Plaza, just for reference, but it doesn't mean it has to be an ellipse. More important thing is that this diagram is trying to show that off of Bob Hope, that we will create a front door that somehow identifies the front to the two stadiums. So in this case, because the stadium is so close and literally on top of Rattlesnake Hill, along the eastern edge of SAC one, that it pushes the amphitheater to the north. The other thing to consider, too, is that, as I noted, the arroyo that comes through here, there is going to be a setback that probably rolls right around through here, and so from this point over to the west, and understanding that topography is high and it's sloping down, and, you know, a lot of this is really going to be difficult and more challenging to build on, but we're starting to understand that we need to get buses, we need to get an arrival experience, we need to provide ample room for approximately 1,400 parking spaces, and so all those things are going to start to, you know, take up all of that area. So this diagram shows if the amphitheater is here, or here, or here. I mean, the farther it gets away from Bob Hope, we believe that it's becoming more back-of-house, but ideally, if we can take the bus, the visibility of buses and all that, and make it sort of a back-of-house, it starts to allow them to stage back here and allow the teams and bands and all that to move from the south up into the corners of the stadium through tunnels. So this is a sectional diagram that takes into account from west to east, looking in the northern direction. So this is SAC one, okay? West side of SAC, the east side, Rattlesnake Hill is here, and so here's our property line, and you can see SAC two is actually running there. And so the topography is sloping down to the arroyo and then a property line. So we took that into a 3D model, and we started capturing imagery to best understand this. Again, just for reference, this is to the north, Joe Battle is running through here. Eventually, we're going to get all this in a model. We'll be able to fly around and be able to give you all a much better idea of what it's going to be like from any vantage point you would like to see it. So as we float around, so this is from the southeast direction, the next view, from the southwest. And then when you start looking at the top of Rattlesnake Hill, a main concourse, and what we're striving to do with this stadium is that, you know, with a 6,000-seat stadium, we think we can get all the seats down on a lower bowl, which therefore gives what we call a top-down experience, so that you're not having to get to the stadium and then go up steps in order to go down to your seat. So the more that we can understand the topography and allow one to gradually just move on into the main concourse and go down to their seat, also creating a 360-degree experience to be able to loop all the way around. Then what that does is it takes the press level and hospitality level up. Therefore, what that does, as you all know, in El Paso, it gets pretty hot, and shade is key. So naturally, the building that's going to be elevated is going to create a lot of nice shade. Also, in times of, let's say, starts to rain, or, you know, things like that, the fans can actually come out and get undercover, and that should be very useful. The other thing that this model implies, too, is that this is an extension of the floor plate, which also, if you can imagine a hospitality suite, having a breakout area that acts as a party terrace, that can also not only be used for football, but let's say, a corporate outing could be leased, and they could actually take over that part of the stadium. From a different vantage point, okay, this is the northeast corner of SAC, and so again, just for reference, this is a cross aisle, and further discussions today, you know, we were kind of wondering about the value of that natural berm that's there, and we thought, "Wow, the possibility of eliminating that could open doors to maybe even more exciting concepts." So we're going to be studying that. And then, you know, the model, or these next few slides actually bounce around a little bit, so you're up on that elevated suite level looking down at SAC one. As I mentioned, it's really nice to be able to take in both sides. The one of the challenges, too, is that these two now get so close to each other, and it look like it's... it feels like it's being forced. So it might work really well up here, but maybe not so well down here. Also, back to the budget, 40 million, and all of a sudden, because this is having to sit up so high, we're having to build a lot more exterior facade. So it began to tell us that the more that we can depress this stadium down and take advantage of the natural topography, it could save us a lot of money in order to maybe afford other nicer things. So that's just looking out to the east. Any questions thus far? No? It's kind of cool, isn't it? So the other cool thing, so again, this is that cross aisle that you currently have at SAC one. So imagine, like, if this was gone, and potentially, this building potentially could drop in elevation, so that maybe this cross aisle and the main concourse of SAC two could be at the same level. All right? So then now, we move on to what we just called the centered scheme. So naturally, what this is doing is, we were completely encroaching over Rattlesnake, and now we just moved it over to see what other things could happen by maybe alleviating the fact that this was appearing to feel forced. So I don't want to dwell too much on this one, because I think the next one is even more interesting, but as you can see here, we're considering that we need to provide a... some sort of loop road that allows a fire truck and maybe even drop-offs at these locations on both north and south to be able to allow things to happen. But as you go on to the next slide, please, the... again, we're constantly testing, "Well, is it best to create the amphitheater here in alignment with SAC two, or does it shift over to this side, and maybe it lengthens this boulevard and actually creates an arrival experience?" I think the team believes that, you know, somehow arriving at something like that just enhances the experience upon entering the destination. So very similar diagram, it literally just takes the stadium and shifts it over. As you can see, that's the elevated press, and that's the top of Rattlesnake Hill, so one would still be able to see into both. And these just further take that idea of whether it goes from here to there, potentially natural berming. Here, the condition is... Here, the condition is very similar, not much has changed. And it's just that the space in between maybe is not as exciting at the moment. You can pretty much go, yeah, so this is a good example of that. Feel like to where you can see how this building starts to get really tall and not very welcoming. It doesn't feel like I can just move right in there and actually take part of a game, but it might make it a bit more challenging. All the other attributes are the same, I mean, sightlines, visibility, connectivity, all that will work just as well. So as you can see, as he cycles through these next shots to the next one, essentially, we have this stadium that we can move subtly and intentionally in order to yield the best-case scenario. So as we go on to the next scheme, what we decided to do is actually say, well, what if we could move the stadium? Now, I guess before you go on to the next, I think what's interesting about these last three views is that while this is the west face of SAC 2, it also becomes a part of SAC 1. I think architecturally, it's starting to make an impression on the existing stadium. And so how we begin to connect those is going to be very key. So now we call this one the east scheme because all we're doing is even moving it even farther to the east. And with the understanding that the arroyo setback and again, approximately 1,400 parking spaces and all the buses and some sort of arrival, we thought, wow, well, maybe the amphitheater is no longer way out in front and we're not giving it all the way right off the bat. And that maybe it is, we could still create a really nice boulevard experience and drop-off, but now maybe the amphitheater is in between the two stadiums. Now it's something that in lieu of the two stadiums creating a perimeter much more fort-like, now by separating those, we're now allowing the public to potentially even roam between the two and concerts that could take place here and maybe even take advantage of, if Rattlesnake Hill remains, you could actually terrace the backside of it and then go to something flat that's like Centennial Plaza at UTEP. And then the west face of the press box lends itself to be more of a band shell or backdrop to some stage. So as you can see from the last two schemes, this dimension remains the same, but now the stadium is way much farther out to the east and still allowing all of this for other use. And now, as you can see, we've got a much larger area in between the two stadiums. And as we begin to layer it with the energy of a space like that and the potential of it, that it could potentially fall in between here, as I mentioned, terracing the back of Rattlesnake Hill or maybe even eliminating it in order to leverage the visibility from an elevated press down to SAC 1. We're going to take the understanding of all these other little components like we thought that maybe we can represent the schools in large three-dimensional logos. You know, three on the south, three on the north. It defines a drop-off area, we can actually create bollards or bollard zones that allows security to maybe remove those if necessary, if vehicles need to actually access the center for maintenance or whatever. And also, this is also representing the boulevard again to a drop-off arrival and maybe still get sort of this loop. So as you can imagine, buses coming and bands moving into the corners of the stadium. And SAC 1 will also continue to work the way it does. It's just that we're kind of zoning the site so that all buses are to the south, you know, and all visitors and all your public front goes to the north. So the model is standing way out here on Bob Hope and then it actually begins to move forward. And again, defining a boulevard and one of the things that we discussed today was security and defining a perimeter and it'd be nice if, much like we've done in some of our spring training facilities in Arizona, where we define an edge, but it's still very visible. You know, and it's tall enough where it's not that easy to climb, but you're keeping, you know, people out that aren't supposed to be in there, but you're defining paths which might be for those that walk, maybe a bike, you know, and maybe we can create a nice little circuit all the way around the property. And as you move closer and ultimately land up here on Rattlesnake Hill and looking back to the stadium, the stadium now is beginning to settle down into the earth. So it's not as tall, it's not as grand, but the energy is going to come with what happens in between the two. And from this vantage point, you could see that you could see the drop-off here, a drop-off here, and then the backside. So essentially, this press level and hospitality level could also be highly glazed, high visibility down into the plaza. The floor plates can extend to create terraces, right, all the way around? So actually, can you back up one, please? So one of the things that we were discussing is how to take advantage of what happens down here on the south end of the stadium. And so there's assembly space, very flexible space that would allow for so many different things to happen. Again, meeting space, corporate outings, whatever it may be. Also merge that with fine arts and the educational side of things. But introducing the meeting space that's subdivisible, that allows access to a terrace, that allows great views to the stadium. And much like we did at Katy, where you've got large assembly space that's subdivitable, so you can have one large space and you have access to terrace with great views to the stadium. And also supporting it with maybe like a warming kitchen. So we understand that there's a kitchen not too far from the site where, you know, food can be prepped, or maybe you can just have it catered and brought in. But you can serve a high level of number of people here. I think we were talking about 190 staff. We were talking about possibly having football banquets, you know, in this space. Something really exciting, which could be that you could be having a function and then on that video board could be highlights of the players and teams that are being recognized that night. The north suite level, so these are just shots, again, bouncing around different corners of the stadium, looking back at SAC 1 or down on the field. And so if we dove a little bit further into some of the things that make up and will make this thing a success, so we researched a bit and we started diving into things like, this is a project that I personally worked on in West Palm Beach. So it's a spring training facility.
Did he make you put that up there?
I just heard he was going to love it, so. But it is a spring training facility for the Nationals and the Astros. But I wanted to put this together and show you because it is a project where in Florida, we can't go down and build that sort of top-down experience because the water table is so high. So therefore, you're forced to essentially go up. But if you really were to study this image here, all of this area back here is for the Nationals, all of this back here would be for the Astros, but in-between is the one thing that they share. So all of this, though, is very much public access. So we had to provide large bodies of water to retain large stormwater and some of it we're using for irrigation. But we created a beautiful promenade experience and right away, you can connect with where the teams are. But more importantly, this whole zone has opportunities for drop-off. There's large hard surface areas, there's planted areas, there's berming, there's steps, an elevated concourse that allows you to get into the stadium. But when there is no game, there is no spring training game, the community comes and uses it. There's arts festivals, there's music, there's marathons, there's all kinds of things that can happen. So now you're opening your doors to the community and making it way more welcoming. So another project that we did in Arizona, and again, these are intentional because this reminds me of El Paso, I think it's the climate is the same. So the more that we can use very durable materials, in this case, it's concrete, you know, gravel beds, waters that, I'm sorry, landscaping that doesn't require much watering, defining ramp conditions, step conditions, concourse paths. And again, many opportunities for one to sit and then lighting and potential opportunities for light poles and things like that. Gating, the ticketed areas, I mean, I kind of, this kind of reminds me of what it might be like between the two stadiums, like if you have to define an edge, but you still want to see through. You don't want to create a fort. So the more open and welcoming, the better. Now, one of the things that we wanted to push, and I think the team saw when they toured the Midlothian Stadium, where the corners, they actually had terracing. And it allowed the fans to actually step down a concourse and access areas that were towards the corners. So that reminded me of what we had done at Salt River for the Diamondbacks and Rockies Stadium where a fan needs to get from the main concourse down to these lower levels. And the way to do that would be through ramping and steps. So we thought, wow, if we could somehow find a really smart way to do that and also take what normally happens up here in concessions level, I mean, on the main concourse, which is concessions, how can we take some of that activity and push it down so that now you've got fans that are a lot closer to the game? The game has become way more social, but if you can actually create these ramped and terracing areas that will allow one to literally just go up to a rail and have their drink and food, likewise, you can lease those zones as well. And imagine if those had canopies over them? And all of a sudden, you're talking about something that's way more attractive and easy to lease out. So ideally, we want to avoid the massive amount of stairs, but I think it's the way we deal with these terraces and allow them to be focused towards the game. Again, more of Centennial Plaza, same night, you know, beautiful elements that will ultimately define the look and feel of this place. So before I go into the visualization, I want to show you a project that, a study that we had done for a different client, and it was a stadium. And it actually, the site actually had a large hill. And we thought, wow, the best way to actually try to save some money is to, like, take the stadium and lock it into that. And it reminded me so much of this project, so I thought I'd share it with you. And one of the things that I really enjoyed was that this level here would allow one to get dropped off, or let's say there's valet, for example, but there would be a bridging condition. And the way this is set up is that this would be, let's say, your hospitality level, to be able to come in and be at that level immediately. But things like this, where it's just a natural topography, where you're terracing it, now it could become a community asset where this could be open classroom, this could be people playing music and whatnot. But the idea is that you provide immediate connectivity to the game. This is just a different view down the way, but there's the bridge, there's a lower concourse and your press and all that could happen up here on the left. Yep, similar thing. And then, so here, the idea of canopies, the elevated structure, it's going to provide great shade, not only on the concourses, but on the seating. And then also you start to see hints of video board and in many ways, like our site here, the topography is dropping. So how we begin to place supporting amenities like concessions and toilets is going to be very important too. But how we define these corners that still provide great views to the game, how we turn them, provide canopies for shading. And the next shot actually shows one where now you're at the end zone. And in this case, we were actually testing out the warping or sloping of a concourse in order to allow a very gradual, very, very simple way to get around the seating bowl. But we understand there's going to be naming rights opportunities and things of that nature. And then when you get to the next image, you'll see that if you were to ignore all this high-rise stuff, but it's, you know, again, it's the simplicity of architecture, something that is of El Paso that resonates with that and hopefully it's cost-effective materials that ultimately defines what we're trying to do. And then even along the perimeter of the stadium, that there might be, again, that very transparent type of fencing, but you immediately can find that connection and resonate with it. So here's kind of the cool stuff because we're going to fly around. Hope I'm not boring you guys. You guys still awake? Okay, good. All right, so our team has done a really great job of taking all those 3D model images and actually stepped it up a notch. And actually now, while, again, I'm going to reiterate that this is just a concept model. So there's a lot of things like tunnels and things like, that aren't really fully worked out or we don't have any of that other stuff that I've been sketching. But what this tries to do is it literally take that east scheme and actually places the stadium in a similar location and it tries to take advantage of the space in-between. And everything from inside out still works the same, although in this model, we're showing a two-story elevated press box to the north. We still have a video board, all right? And, you know, graphically, these may not be representing what I think what we want to do at this point, but I think the potential of terracing and notching and, again, focusing the audience to the center is something that we'll work towards. But what you can see here is that while we're understanding, Phil, can you just kind of show the bottom side of this a little bit? Yeah, what you can see here is, so we've got the existing topography modeled, right? So again, what this building, what this option does is actually it minimizes the amount of elevated structure that we have to build. But it nestles this to a point where it creates a very seamless connectivity across, thank you, across to the west. And this is Rattlesnake Hill. But today, it was kind of eye-opening, we said, well, you know, the one thing that Rattlesnake does is actually impedes the visibility from SAC 2 to SAC 1. So we were trying to visualize, how is it that maybe if we were to scrape Rattlesnake off of there, all of a sudden, maybe even down to the cross aisle, there you go, so down to the cross aisle, so all of a sudden now you could sense the 360 of SAC 1, but it could flow in a sort of a top-down experience? From there down to a terracing, which is an amphitheater. And the nice thing about that too is that, again, this is just a diagram in form, but it is two-stories and all the media and press and all that will live in there and hospitality. But if we can begin to strategically place these extensions of the floor plate or floor plates that actually give us those those views and ways to connect with this amphitheater setting, we're going to reshape all this to begin to understand how we can unite both stadiums and actually create a much more wonderful and approachable space in-between. So again, this is one of the more exciting parts of what I love about what we do is because, again, I feel like not everyone can read floor plans and things like that, but once we start seeing things in three dimensions and I can say, hey, what's it look like from right there and, or what's it look like from SAC 1 over to SAC 2? And I think our models are going to be so helpful throughout this entire process and it'll be able to be very transparent with you and so you can ultimately, by the end, you'll know. I mean, what I love about this is that by the time buildings are open and done, like I feel like I've been there because we've been flying like this for so much. So with that, guys, I don't know, did I miss anything? I feel like I could go on, all right?
I have a few, I have a few questions.
Sure.
It's a beautiful model, I love it. Have you considered during our monsoon season here in August, flooding since it sits on a lower than the other one? See if you go back to, see how it's on an angle?
Yes, sir.
And I'm thinking, you know, they'll show up to a game and it's, they have a flood field. Have we took that into consideration?
We've begun trying to be smart about how we work and finesse the site so that essentially we can slow down stormwater, right? We want to maintain a sense of permeability, right? So porous, the more porous, but being able to create a way to slow down large, because I know it comes down hard for a short amount of time. So there are certain studies that are being done on the arroyo and what it can handle, but making a move like this is, we're going to have to find ways to navigate how the water does get off of there, so it is a top priority. Yes. Yes, there's a detention system that's going to require that it be more than likely down to the lower right because it is at the lower end. That's a great point. I think it's going to hit on one of the things that we strive to do as as a firm, we're trying to get to net-zero buildings. One of those is sustainability, one of the measures that we try to really focus on. So we'll keep that in mind going forward.
Mr. Fred, a question. Are you done with it, the presentation?
Again, there's more, I could go on, but I think this is a good point. This is a good point.
Hey, so just for the audience reference and the trustees reference, so amphitheater right there in the middle, right, where the mouse is at?
Yes.
About how many people do you think that would hold? I don't know if you know the answer to that question.
No, but I can throw a range out there. I mean, it could be that it's, what, 1,500 to 3,000? It depends on how we shape this and define the extents because, I mean, we can make it grow even farther out. I mean, but it's all about how we can define, we got to get this right.
Got it.
Okay, so.
Now, if there was, you know, hey, we decided to have one of our bands, you know, mariachis or band there, where would the stage be there?
Well, I think one of the more obvious ones, we believe that this this structure itself can become a band shell, all right? So we've even thought about, hey, well, a tractor-trailer pulls up, equipment's going to have to be brought, maybe you build a makeshift stage right here, somewhat elevated off the concourse, but it'll be somewhat undercover, you know, because they could actually stage under here. And, yes, right, so all the, the fans could be out in here?
Got it.
This is, this is from the vans, the band's point of view.
So, from the press box, if you can pull out and see the, show the back of the press box, if you don't, uh, from the amphitheater?
From the amphitheater?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
So, if there's, uh, you know, there's an activities going on, kids are having fun there, that press box, would that have windows where if you're in a press box, you can see down and check, see what's going on?
Absolutely, yeah, and we might even, maybe to further enhance the idea of a band shell, imagine like taking the floor plate right here and extending it out to create a balcony, so that you can come out of what would be a hospitality suite, let's say. Now you're outside and you're at a guardrail looking down on something, but that extension of the floor plate right here, again, might begin to...
Right.
Take the, the, the sound, right, and push it outward. Now, that's just one location, right? So imagine if you did have a music festival, a jazz festival or something like that, this is one location, you also have these, this really awesome terracing things that, that we think that, if we really do it right, I mean, it could be so awesome for you all to be able to program whatever you want, but this whole thing right here could be a stage, now the, the fans and the crowd could be on the field, uh, cameras can be on the band and displayed on the video board. I mean, there's so much opportunity that can happen here.
So, can you zoom out again so you can show both? Um, I mean, I don't know how the trustees feel, but I, I, yeah, there you go. I like what they're, when they're separated because now you could, if they're closed up and you have the amphitheater in the front, would it be closed on one side? No, here you could go, walk in through this, through the north or through the south, you can, there you go.
Yeah, you could do that, that, uh, and again, you know, the earlier schemes, I was talking about creating arrival moments or drop-offs, um, you know, I think earlier we were talking about shared rides like Lyft and Uber, and so thinking about all the things that, that create congestion. Uh, the other thing, too, is that we've having, we've been having a lot of conversation about noise or, or sound, right? So SAC one creates sound. Forget where he is, he was telling me that he lives about a mile away, and he can hear, right, today, he can hear the bands play, right, when there's a game going on. So, one of the things that we believe, while it's, it's really nice to think that SAC two could be up close to SAC one, I think the two are going to be competing, and while we are going to be doing studies for that, we believe that pushing the stadium away and down is going to be so helpful in allowing the two to live simultaneously. So you can check that box, but at the same time, we're, we're creating a space in between, which is very attractive, and security and safety, they, they love the idea that they could also have a command center that sits up high that allows them to still look that way. That's what we're very intrigued with. While this is nice, uh, you know, we, we believe that it's also, maybe there is a win-win to where we can shave off some of this, still create a beautiful amphitheater, but allow the visibility from up here down to SAC one field.
How big is that amphitheater? What's, what's the square footage? Because right there doesn't look very big, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to be huge.
Yeah, I, I mean, my eye always goes to, I mean, you know what a football field is, right?
Yes.
So it looks like it's...
Half that, maybe.
Three-quarter the size of a football field, I mean, but it's also, this area right now, as it's currently drawn, is flat, but this is tiered.
Also...
So, there you go.
Remember the, for those of you who have been to the Centennial Plaza, UTEP, some of your earlier diagrams.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and Centennial Plaza is about half the width of a football field in, in, in diameter, so we naturally thought that's a pretty good, good starting point, but we can actually take our studies even further to actually be able to answer that question confidently, be able to say, okay, we're going to strive to be able to have a maximum of three thousand people, you know? So all those are target points, just like, I know that there's a, a top priority, which is how to define this end zone building, how to make sure that, that bands and teams, you know, have an, an easy way to get in and out, um, how to be able to give you the opportunity to do, uh, and program things at the terraces and create these unique experiences that maybe El Paso's never seen, right? That's, I think, what we're striving for, to be really innovative and to allow this to be a destination like no other.
Will there be a way to isolate the two structures to where if you have opposing teams, say playoff teams, or in this case, where they wouldn't be able to see each other at the same time? I mean, because the way you're making it sound, it sounds like they have a, a view of the other stadium, the other, let's say, uh, two opposing playoff teams come, and they want to keep separated to work out how their, let's say, yes.
Yeah, the...
Is it going to be to the point where you won't be able to see what's going on on the other? I mean, I'm just...
The two will be in different elevations, so it's just a matter of how we, maybe we define fencing lines, so, so as to not have someone stand like right here, I mean, you, you really can't see the field from this vantage point, and especially if, I think, Phil, are you sitting on Rattlesnake Hill, or if you drop down to main concourse or the cross aisle?
Yeah.
Yes.
...you have to have like eagle eyes to see in that place.
Yeah.
The idea is that there would be no sound, but also, and also, there would be no way for people to get a discovery of, of this facility, with more people and excitement and connection to this stadium.
Thank you.
I think we discussed that about maybe two college teams that are playing at the Sun Bowl, they might want to come here and train in advance, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That has happened in the past, and they've used two different facilities, but they've always used SAC one as their practice.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, one more thoughts, and it's, in my opinion, the current SAC, Mr. Hodgins, sits about seven thousand eight hundred students?
That is correct.
All right, I for some reason thought it was a twelve thousand. It's a, it's a pretty big stadium, right? And I just think like we had a football game last weekend, Thursday and Friday, Canelo versus, uh, Eastlake, and then Friday night, um, forgot, Old Dorado and Pebble Hills. It's beautiful, but I think because of the, of the, of the size, it, it looks, you know, like it's empty, you know? So, I was talking to the team earlier, um, and I don't, I don't think today's the, the meeting, but just to kind of keep something in mind, that I think this stadium, this second stadium needs to be more intimate, smaller seating, instead of having so many, so many seats, because you go to a game, man, you don't want to, you know, you want that intimate, that, that, that good, nice feeling where, where the students and everyone's excited, instead of being so spread out. I mean, it's just, uh, just wanted to make that...
No, I love, I want to underscore the word intimacy, because I feel what you don't have as a program element on SAC two is a track.
Yes.
The track pulls the seating way farther away, so naturally, just by eliminating that, you're going to be more, way more intimate, uh, and so, but the fans are going to feel like they're right on the field, it's going to be amazing.
Phil, can you, I mean, Fred, Phil's over here. If, can you go to the, uh, show the SAC two in, in plant view, kind of, from the aerial? Fred, can you talk to them about how we, how you've kind of taken the, it's just not a straight bleacher, see how SAC one is, is straight?
Oh, yes.
SAC two is the end zone, or the end bleachers are kind of angled in.
Right, right, so...
Not similar to Katie.
Yes, uh, and naturally, that is a sightline consideration, so the farther you move away from midfield, I mean, if I'm staying parallel, but now all of a sudden I'm constantly having to turn, so it's just that subtle angle or break in the bowl, simultaneously with, again, the clearances that I was talking about, that all those are all under consideration when we're developing the seating rake. So, um, o- other things that will influence whatever happens under here, too, is, is those angles, you know, sometimes they get really steep in some of these college stadiums where people feel uneasy, so this is going to be something that ultimately, uh, will allow us to find that balance between enhancing that, that feeling of intimacy and sort of that home crowd kind of feel, or, uh, but that along with, uh, maybe even the placement of where the bands go, you know, we were discussing, well, are they both on the ends, or is there one here and above there, and so we're having a lot of really great conversations about just logistics of how to make this thing function and work well for everyone across the board, while, again, instilling flexibility for, for you to be able to program something that gives you so much flexibility and maybe even is forward-thinking so that you can anticipate things that you want to do in the future. So, like you were saying earlier, like, oh, well, we built this big room, and it's like, well, yeah, but it's not big enough to do what we want. So, well, no, we, we need to get that on the table right now, because this is just, you know, ink on paper and boxes that we can move on a computer, but we need to get that stuff right now.
Okay. How many does the SAC two, how many seats does it provide? You said how many for SAC one?
Seven.
Seven?
SAC one is seven...
Right under eight thousand for SAC one, that's per the drawings.
Right.
SAC two is looking, we're looking at six thousand.
Okay.
And the amphitheater, we've heard, or we saw anywhere from two thousand to twenty thousand.
Yeah.
You know, so it just depends on what we can show in there. If, if this is the conceptual modeling that y'all like, which I think is the way to go, especially since you can level off Rattlesnake Hill and from the two-story press box, can visually make out some of SAC one now. Now, some of the earlier modelings and pictures showed two sets of poles, that's something that we had to address, too, but that was addressed, they addressed that at Toyota Stadium, where they, they designed their own poles, or they go back-to-back on the same, single pole, so you don't have additional poles there.
Okay.
But this, this will allow them to start their modeling and, and start studying sound and everything else.
...development, yeah.
I personally, I prefer this east scheme, uh, I like the separation between the two stadiums, because yes, you do have to consider the sound elements between the band, even the announcers of the football games, the crowds, and so I, I think that distance will be good. I love the amphitheater to be used for fine arts, uh, I can picture our mariachis out there, and, uh, I think it'll be a wonderful, wonderful space for our students to use for so many different reasons, but I do like the space between the two.
And Katie, I said, Katie ISD had two stadiums, but they had no amphitheater in the middle, like, we're going to have here.
No.
So that was empty spot. This is gorgeous.
Yes, and it's also, uh, at Katie, it's a north-south orientation, so the area in between, a lot of it's surface parking for buses and other things like that, so we have a unique opportunity here to put them side by side and introduce something that works for both.
So if we decide to go with this plan, what would be the entrance, like, the wow factor?
Well, I, again...
Can you mention something about blades or something?
Yeah, so that's, at, at a macro level, like, we're considering what happens when someone is driving, and how does, how does one understand that? This is, this is a unique destination, um, I'm sure you've seen this sort of thing throughout, and it's one thing that what a billboard does, or like the pickaxe and says, hey, that's, that's UTEP, you know, I've, that's, I connect with that, I understand it, I get it, uh, and so what is it for, for this district and, and this destination? Um, I think the available property along that edge, uh, I think we, we may don't have access to some now because I think some of it got sold off, uh, so it may be that maybe we just have one significant marker at Joe Battle and Bob Hope, and then, but then, back to your question of what's the wow fact, what's the impression? Well, that's at one level, you got speeding cars, right, and this new stadium is going to be blocked by SAC one. I think regardless of what we do, I mean, you might see a little glimpse, it's farther away, it's down the hill, so, uh, the more that we can really be sensitive and choreograph that experience from the, the highway down to the intersection, developing Bob Hope, it looks like we're, we're going to have to put some, some dollars into that to improve that to a point that then allows one to come onto the property. And so, what that arrival experience is, and imagine that, uh, earlier I mentioned, or I alluded to it, to not give it all away at once, but the idea that you can arrive and, yeah, everything from wayfinding and know where you, you need to go to park, whether your team is playing at one or two, but the closer you get into it, then there's more information that just plays up that wow factor, that, that impression, and we want people to walk away like, man, I want to come back, or I can't wait to the next game, or, I mean, imagine the way you guys will be programming, too, this marquee could also be announcing what's coming next, you know, it's upcoming events and things like that, that...
Fred, with Aquatics right next to it, how are we going to have it all flow together? Two stages, Aquatics is going to be there, I mean, we can't, I know we're building a new stadium, and, and I saw the design on the entrance, which is awesome, but we also have Aquatics on the side. So, are we going to make it flow together, we're all three?
Yeah, that's what we're going to accomplish in the master plan.
Yes, yes.
Kim, uh, Phil, can you go to the, a site plan that shows the property in yellow and...
So, thanks for bringing that up, Tom, because I, one of the things that we love to do is, it's really easy to, to say, all right, we're going to dive right in and start designing a stadium, but we, initially, we, we wanted to take a step back, and I've just described a macro scale, uh, discussion about the perception of the building, but, you know, if you can step even one more step back and say, well, what about the, the north side of Bob Hope? What, what's the, the potential of that property, and how's it going to enhance the value of what you have right now? See?
So, this property, this pink goes up to right here, and this is a narrow strip, that was, we sold that, and of course, we purchased this, all, all of this property, and, uh, you know, so, uh, this corner is still available here in green, we use that as an overflow parking lot right now.
So that green is not ours yet?
Uh, no.
We're working on it.
But come Thursday, or Tuesday, you'll have a...
[laughing]
Not yet, no.
But, yeah, but imagine taking this image and, like, pushing it out a little bit more and understanding what are the other stakeholders, what are the things that we might be able to influence as a district?
Yeah, this, this, this extension, and we're, uh, PSC, our local firm here, uh, Hector and his team has been working with the county, uh, the MPO and all that, but there's a big, long build-out of Bob Hope and everything, and of course, our new school site is way over here somewhere. Uh, I showed you that drawing.
Have we thought about the traffic impact once they open up Bob Hope and when we have games?
We, we'll, we'll have to do analysis, and we've talked about that. Uh, we'll do an analysis, an impact study, uh, but if you remember that, uh, document I showed you, that site plan, that showed, uh, the development in the residential areas coming around, uh, around the SAC and around the proposed new facility. You know, there's development being done down here, that apartment complex down here, uh, that's, that's being submitted, uh, but there, there's an issue here with, we don't own that little corner right there, you know, but somehow or another, Bob Hope is going to come across, and working with the county and everybody to determine, uh, we feel like this is the alignment, this is basically how it's going to align. It might move a little bit up, but that's basically what we think it's, the alignment's going to be.
Another thought just came into mind to try and address your question about the, the aquatics piece, and, again, we only, it's okay, we only have like forty million, right? So, I think the, the smarter we can be upfront to leverage the, the dollars and, and potentially maybe be able to afford a nice wayfinding strategy that maybe some of the edges of the aquatics could also be, appear to be like they're a part of the rest of the projects, right? That, so as one is moving through there, they, they feel like the signage is the same way. Now you're like in a campus, like, and so things all relate to each other.
Complex. And I was asking Dr. Espinoza about the entrance and exit, because we have one on the north and one on the south, and I know whenever we have two of our teams playing, uh, traffic gets pretty hectic, and so if we have games in both sacs at the same time, getting people in and out of there, but Dr. Espinoza said one of the, uh, things that they would do is, is scheduling games at off times, at, at, uh, separate times to where that would be alleviated. Would we, are we still looking at only the north and the south entrance and exit, or...
Currently, yes, right?
There, there is a, can you move it up a little bit? There you go. There is, with that development here, there is another access, but we don't know... with that development here, there is another access. But we don't know, you know, if that's a part of this development or not. But it, it shows a connection to Pasale the Estee here, off of our property, too, so.
Okay. And, I mean, from what I saw, the way that Bob Hope will extend, that maybe the, that north corner, another?
Yeah, right. See, right here, here's, here's the entrance, right?
Right. But come further down.
But Bob Hope is going to go here.
Right.
The second stadium would be here. So you're saying it's not going to, is that another, would there be another, could we do another entrance there?
Oh, yeah. So it's like the, was it the centered scheme, I think, showed the, the access to Bob Hope could be farther down.
Well, I'm, I'm saying having more than one.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we're getting people in and out.
One here.
Yeah.
That's the one that's there. And then do another entrance there. And we would have this one here. And then, like Mr. Hudson said, depends what they do.
Yeah, we'll have multiple access out of the parking lot to either Bob Hope or whatever connection.
Just to alleviate the traffic.
Yeah.
Eventually, is Bob Hope going to continue to where the new school's going to be built? So that would be another access exposed, access?
Yes, yes, eventually.
It can be another.
Back where the new school is being built, Bob Hope is under construction now.
Okay.
And it ties into Mission Ridge? Is that Mission?
Mission Ridge. Pasale the Estee?
Yeah.
Is that it?
No.
Pasale?
Uh, no, Mission.
Mission Ri, okay. I see.
Yeah, Pasale the Estee and Bob Hope would be kind of parallel.
Excuse me.
Gotcha.
Excuse me. Sir, I'm sorry. You're not allowed to do that.
Does anyone else have any questions?
This looks amazing. We can't wait to see as we move forward. I love the design and y'all are doing a great job.
Is there a consensus, then, that we can actually act on this last iteration that creates an amphitheater in between the two?
It's not a, it's not an agenda item, so we can't take a vote.
Gotcha.
I don't think, but what we've heard.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 7:31.